All righty. First thing up this morning, we have a public meeting Commissioners Court. It's the meeting agenda reads as such. This is a public hearing regarding the continuation of the assessment of the $10 fee to a certain recording transaction by Liberty County Clerk for the County Clerk's Records Archive Fund. According to Texas Local Government Code, Section 118.025, the County Clerk's Records Archive Fund is solely for the preservation and restoration of Liberty County's permanent records collection housed in and managed by the Liberty County Clerk's Office and is outlined by the County Clerk's Archive Restoration Plan. So what we're going to consider and have a hearing about today is whether to continue this assessment. And it is a good assessment, in my opinion, Sheriff. It, all those old books that have been slowly falling apart have now been restored, and Lee and her team have done a great job in getting them to where they, well, are accessible. Matter of fact, I used them not long ago, looking for some old court action from 1950 someplace. So, before I was born, let me put it that way. Okay? Yeah. So, Lee, you have anything you want to add to it?
Um, no. We are getting very near the end. Can y'all hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay. We're getting near the end of the project, probably three more years and it'll be completed. It's been moving on quite well. The hurricane and the other disaster hit us a little bit on our revenue, but I'm sure it's going to rebound and hopefully we'll have this project completed, excuse me, completed in three years.
Okay. Yeah, the, even the brands, those are protected too in this, this restoration effort. And there were some books that Sheriff had over in his old storage building that I believe we finally got those and where people were trading their fines and fees for chickens and eggs in lieu of cash, which in 18 whatever it was, that was probably pretty acceptable. But, you know, it was, it's interesting reading, but it, now it's preserved through perpetuity. So we'll sit for a few moments and see if there's anyone that has anything to say as far as a public hearing in this regard.
Jay, may I put it on the record that we did indeed run this through the vindicator? The notice was properly given.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Hearing no comments, I believe we can close out the, the public hearing at this time. And we'll recess for a few moments and we'll start our Commissioners Court at 9:00 AM.
Okay.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
It's nine, it's like about nine o'clock, August 13th, 2024, Liberty County Commissioners Court. This is a regular meeting of the Commissioners Court. Let the record show that we do have a quorum established, that Commissioner Carbowski, Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Whitmire present. I'm looking for Commissioner Wilson online, but don't see him yet. But, but we do have a quorum established. We do have business for the court. If you would all rise, please. Ally Smart with a state representative or representative nominee, Janice Holt's office, he's up this way. And if you would please, Ally, and lead us in our pledges.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you so much. Y'all would pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day, for another opportunity, for another chance, for another, well, just to benefit someone, to help someone out, to help each other out, to try our best to make our cities and our state and our county and our country a better place, a better place to live. And Lord, I know that you watch over us each and every day and you, you guide us, you offer your, your wisdom to us. Sometimes we probably need to listen better, but I know that you do. Lord, your grace and your wisdom are so important to us and for us to help one another. Lord, schools just started back and, Lord, pray that you'll watch over the children, watch over the teachers and the staff and administrations, but especially the young ones. When they get on the school bus in the morning and then they go to school all day, then they get off the bus in the evenings, Lord, please just deliver them there and back and back to the loving arms of their families. Lord, please watch over the, our friends and our loved ones and our coworkers that are sick and they need your help, they need your blessings, Lord, some need miracles. And we do believe in miracles, Lord. We've seen them. Lord, for the unrest in the, in the world, there's been quite a bit of evidence, Lord, and I, I pray that you'll keep your eyes on that, be with our men and women in uniform. Lord, if they have to go and to help others, please be with them and keep them wrapped in your loving arms. For our first responders, Lord, our police officers, our constables, our firemen, Lord, DPS officers, the people on the border that are doing their best to protect us, Lord, I hope that you'll be with them all through their days at their own duty and standing guard and watching over, watching over everyone. That's our country and other countries as well. Lord, again, thank you for all your wonderful blessings, for your, your love and your grace. Please forgive us where we failed you, Lord, and we ask all these things in Jesus' most precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Well, notices and proclamations. Dee Dee, I don't have any notices or proclamations today, but it's kind of quiet. But we do have public comment. As a matter of fact, Ms. Smart, Ally, if you would, come on up here and introduce yourself. And you are with the Republican nominee for State Representative, Janice Holt's office. You're the local representative, correct?
Yes, sir. And that's what I was here for today, just to introduce myself and to offer our office. We're available to everybody here and we will be having an office in Liberty, hopefully opening later this year. And we're, I'll be the district coordinator. If we can help in any way, please just let us know.
Well, when you get a phone number, let us know.
I definitely will.
Because I guarantee you, Lee, we'll put it on, online.
Sure.
Through the County Clerk's office and we can also through our office.
Wonderful. We will definitely do that.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Please, please be, stay in touch and come see us and we'll do likewise.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Have any conflicts of interest today? If so, now it's time to declare such. Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does everyone have the opportunity to look over the consent agenda? Dwayne or Kim, do we have anything that we need to add on? Or Lee?
I don't have any judge, thank you.
Nothing?
Not today.
Hallelujah. Okay.
Make a motion to approve this in agenda.
All righty. Got a motion from Bruce.
Guys?
Yes, ma'am.
There was one. I sent it to Dwayne. I thought he was going to introduce it. For our notice system, the TextMyGov system, the Office of Emergency Management has requested that we be able to limit the scope of the broadcast by zip codes. I think an example they gave was when the city of Paldezeta needed to boil their water and the program they were using at the time could not limit it and it went across the county and everybody got all panicky because they thought they had to boil their water when it was really just in Paldezeta. To alter the contract and add it to it, it's $500. It's really just changing it so that we can add this to the contract and, and it will be an additional cost of $500. Can we approve that on the consent agenda so we, so we can move forward with the program?
Well, I have two nods, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So it looks like we can, Lee. I just, sometimes when we get something in late on a Friday, it's hard to get it included in the, in the agenda.
I amend my motion to add the additions from Ms. Chambers.
All righty.
Thank you.
Motion Bruce, second from Greg with the addition. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to the regular agenda. First rattle out, good morning, Martin. I see you back there. And Sarah, I see you back there too. Y'all think you're going to hide, you can't hide from me, okay? Why don't y'all come on up and, we have an information item. Martin Gonzalez is our district engineer with TaxDOT. In other words, the Beaumont District. Well, Martin is the head engineer over there, okay? We have a local with Roberto at the Liberty office, but yet you're over, how many total offices?
So eight counties in total.
Eight counties in total, okay?
Yes. Roberto is over Chambers and Liberty. So we have the Beaumont District with TaxDOT is comprised of eight counties. And we have three area engineers. Roberto is over Chambers and Liberty. And, and then, so the area engineers and the directors report to me that I oversee all construction operations, design, maintenance of all the projects in the eight counties.
When did they rename them from, to that, from resident engineers? I've just always wondered about that.
I think it was probably in the 80s, early 80s.
Okay, I've slept since then, okay. It's, but anyway, you're going to give us an update on, well, 787 Bridge, for one thing.
Yes, sir. So, so good morning, everybody, and appreciate y'all allowing us the opportunity to come and visit with you. As you mentioned, I'm Martin Gonzalez. I'm the district engineer for TaxDOT Beaumont District. And this is Sarah Duprey, our management analyst with the district as well. So she handles all of our government affairs. So she's going to be reaching out to you here shortly, you know, to start setting up meetings for the future. So we wanted to make sure that we came and visited with you all because at the request of a lot of the residents around Romea and, and the area there, concerns obviously with FM 787, the, the bridge that, as you all know, the approach slab collapsed as a result of the, the May flooding that we had. The Trinity River was, was flowing pretty high and it caused the, the approach slab, not the bridge, the approach slab to, to fail. So the, the embankment was washed out underneath the approach slab, caused it to go into the Trinity River. So we did an emergency maintenance contract to try to help with that. At the time, the intent was just to make those repairs open that up as quickly as possible. And our staff was working on making those, those design changes because we needed to add an additional span to the westbound approach so that it could help bridge that, that erosion that we're seeing. And while we were developing the plans and actually were in the process of awarding them to a contractor, our staff went out there to the, to the site and saw that on the east side of the bridge, the repairs that we just finished about a year and a half ago from after Harvey, we started seeing some settling in, in the roadway and some cracking. So we asked Bridge Division to, to come out and evaluate those, those additional damages that we were seeing. So just erring on the side of caution, I canceled that, that contract so that I could do one contract to fix both sides. So Bridge Division came out, they looked at it, they did some, some evaluations, and we're going to be doing a temporary repair. Everything that we do in this location is temporary, and I want to make sure that I, that I share that with you all because we've been fighting this battle for probably over 45 years. You know, the, the water's going to do what the water wants to do. So we could try all we want to, but nature's going to win in the end. And so, so I can't speak for what my predecessors did and did not do, but our plan is to realign the roadway. So, but for now, we understand the priority of trying to get that road open back up to the public. And so we share in that. However, that's not something I can rush into and I don't want to rush into it. I want to make sure that the traveling public's going to be safe. So I want to make sure that I, I put something out there that's going to be safe for everybody. So I explored some options and going one lane, you know, across the bridge so that I could maybe expedite that. But with the construction being what it was, I would be just as, as well off to do the full entire bridge because it's closed right now anyway, so I could go ahead and do the whole entire thing. So Bridge Division went back and evaluated based on the damages that we're seeing on the east side as well and determined that we're going to add a couple of additional spans to try to gap that, where we're seeing those failures. Now, keep in mind, again, this is a temporary solution. Our long-term solution is to realign the roadway and we're working on that concurrently as we are doing this emergency maintenance contract that we got a, we got an update from our staff yesterday because my expectation was for this to go out to the contractors. So what happens is with an emergency maintenance contract, we do the design, and then after the design is done, then we go, we search for, for contractors, specific contractors. It's not like our typical awarding of contracts, which is low bid. In an emergency maintenance contract situation, we actually seek out contractors that we know are fully capable of doing this kind of work, kind of specializing that work. So, so we'll send this out to four contractors specific and they will then tell us how long it would take them. You know, we provide a timeline, but they tell us how fast they think they can get it done and how much it's going to cost us to do it. And I don't have to go with the lowest bidder. I can go with whoever I choose in that particular instance. So that's the process of how that works. Now, our, our staff let us know yesterday that they'd have to do some, some design adjustments because they need to add a little bit of superelevation because on the, on the east side, after the Harvey repairs, as you all know, anybody that's familiar with that area, there's a, there's a pretty, there's a pretty sporty horizontal curve at that spot.
Yeah, it is.
So, so we need to add a little bit of a superelevation to it. So they're making some of the modifications to, to the, the bends and the abutments to make sure that we, that we safely design that bridge. Once we get that done, I anticipate that being done this week so that we can do a final review and go out to the contractors by next week. And then from there, we'll award it. After we award the contract, then we're anticipating approximately four months for completion of the, of the project before we can open up the bridge. So, say again?
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting, yeah, thank you. Thank you for that caveat. Yeah. See, that's actually keeps me out of trouble all the time. So, weather permitting, we're anticipating four months to complete this project. And, and again, keep in mind, our, our job and our focus is always to try to be the source of the tax credit money. So we're trying our best to make the best decisions possible. And that's one of the reasons why I canceled the project when I did, because I figured combining the work would give me a better price on, on building, rebuilding these, these, these approaches. And, and also, I'd rather work with one contractor at a time out there than have two different ones, you know, operating with two different timelines, et cetera, et cetera. So this just makes it, you know, one, one set of folks that I need to get on to if, if they're not moving. But, but again, I wanted to share the fact that we are concurrently working on the permanent solution, which is a realignment. We are doing a geomorphology, a hydraulic geomorphology study that's going to give us the best location to, to move the FM 787 to. There's been some studies that were done back in 2018 and there's, but it was based on historical data. We need to see actual, you know, the, the geomorphology study actually lets us see what the river has been doing over these past years physically. They're going to actually do a scientific study on it. We anticipate that being done by October because they're doing some, some drone flights on it right now. But, all that being said, we are already working on, on getting our consultant on board to do the design for it. And we're working with FHWA for possible funding, things like that, to be able to, to expedite this contract. Our current schedule has us, when did we say we could potentially let it, 28?
Yes, 28.
Yeah, 2028 for the permanent solution and which we would project to open around 2030 or 2031.
2030 was the estimate.
The estimated, like, I mean, opening, 2030. So however, if there's any way that we can expedite that, then we will try to do that and hopefully the, the permanent solution will be, be done a lot sooner. I know that's a whole lot of information to share at one time, but also we wanted to come and, and share this with you because, like I said, at the request of the residents in that area, we're going to go do a town hall meeting so that I can share the same information with them on Thursday?
Thursday evening.
On Thursday evening at?
It's, uh, I'm sure.
Seven o'clock?
Right back to the church.
Yes, at the, at 1:46 and 787.
Yep.
So, so we'll be there if y'all want to come out and hang out with us.
I believe we will, yeah.
So, but, but just wanted to come and, and give you all that update, let you know where we're, where we're sitting at right now. And, and we understand the frustrations, we really do, and the decisions that we're making, we're trying to make sure that we keep everybody safe out there. And I know that, that sometimes that's a hardship and I understand that. And, and trust me, I, I know how that feels. I just want to make sure that whatever decision we make, it's the safest for the public.
The, I'm not going to assume or guess, but I would say that the fix, temporary fix would be more like a precast placement? Is that what you're looking at using?
So in order to try to expedite construction, what I've asked the, the staff is to look at as many precast elements as possible. So, so in some cases, they're going to use high-yield, early-strength concrete, which that's going to let us get that open a lot faster.
Yeah.
So that, because typically for anybody that, for anybody that really wants to know about construction, we have to wait until we, we get a 28-day string before we can open that traffic. So high-yield, early-strength can let us accomplish that, reach that hardness, sometimes within five to seven days. So that really helps us move projects along. So combination of precast elements plus high-yield, early-strength concrete is going to let us move this project along a lot quicker. So the timeline that I gave, another four months, you know, it's possible.
Pretty realistic.
Move up. But I don't want to, I don't want to say that and then be like, well, Martin said on this day, so, but.
Well, the other side of it is, at your public meeting Thursday, you're probably going to be introduced to a whole lot of engineers that live in that area. Just saying. But I do know one in particular that I've worked with in the past. It is a civil engineer, that he's retired, and he sent me a note last night, said, why not just build a suspension bridge further up north, like the miniature Fred Hartman? I'm like, hey, I'll mention that to Martin when I see him. But there it is. You're going to get a bunch of ideas.
So I'm always open to that possibility. However, those type of signature bridges, typically city or county contributes in the funding for those. So, that's got to go.
I'll add one, like, I'll be up there on Thursday and I can tell you that now, the people up there in the area, I appreciate y'all taking time to come up there and visit with us.
We do.
We're looking forward to visiting.
Absolutely.
Sure do.
Looking forward to it.
Thank y'all so much.
Leave the tomatoes at home. Don't, don't bring any of them.
I think I'll be pleased with what you guys have.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Appreciate y'all. Thank you so much.
On another matter, on the widening of Devers to Liberty. Have we got any updates on that?
I'll have to follow up with?
We're supposed to be having a public hearing later this year.
Yeah.
And also I've got constituents asking me about the timeline on 770 between Raywood and Palzetta, the project that is ongoing with those two bridges there.
Let me get an update from Roberto on that one and I'll, I'll have him reach out to you to give you the timeline, the estimated completion timeline for that. Thank you.
Sure do.
Yes.
If y'all don't have any additional questions, if anything hard, ask Sarah. Anything easy, ask me.
Let's see, there's a, there's a rust bottle in 1409 by the Chevron Station at south, way south to date, almost Old River, and that rust bottle just almost just removed your soul from your body. It's one of those kind of, yeah, yeah. It's, it's, it's one of these, it's like, it's not there, but then it's there. Yes.
So I would like to, and I appreciate you letting me know that, but I also want to make sure that, remind y'all that if you see any issues like that on state roadways of any kind, please always feel free to reach out to the maintenance supervisor who is Jesse, Jesse Flake in this particular area.
Yeah.
In Liberty County and also Roberto. So between the two of them, if you don't get any answers or any, any resolution to those concerns in a timely manner, obviously, give me a call, Judge, and we'll make sure.
Roberto's always really good to work with.
Yeah, I'd like to hear that.
I don't know what the bridge replacement was talking to.
I did, and he said that the, the bridge was already in the closeout phase, so, so they should be almost done with that one.
Okay, good. Yeah.
All right. Well, thank y'all so much. Appreciate you. See you Thursday night.
Sounds good.
If not before, okay.
Appreciate y'all.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. That was information only, so there's no action to be taken. But if you would, someone make the motion that take no action.
Make a motion, take no action.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number two, from Mr. Brown over at the Tax Sess Reclector's Office, considering to approve overpaid refund of the amount of $4,349, $4,349. Don't want to be jumped up too high on that one. And 77 cents for account number 27307, Georgia Peterson. Brother Rick?
Yes, sir. Just as in the past, anything over $2,500 refunded back to the taxpayer has to have Commissioners Court's approval, along with the audit and on down the line. So we are recommending that this refund be approved. They've already filled out that application. We verified the overpayments, so it's up to the court at this point to take that action.
Will it be approved? Second.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce to approve. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number three, from Mr. Brown, consider and approve overpaid refund of the amount of $2,671.66 for account 48098, Victoria Robles.
Same thing. In excess of 2,500, requires the court to approve it. We've gone through the application process, verified the funds as a double payment and we'll proceed with the refund once we get all the approvals.
Will it be approved? Second.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Maybe we'll take all that overpaid refunds and use that toward our suspension bridge contribution. Yeah, okay. Number four, from Ms. Chambers, County Clerk's Office, discuss and approve the County Clerk Records Management Fund Plan for the budget year ending September 30th, 2025. Lee? Oh, you're muted. Hold it.
Okay, I can't hear you.
There we go. I forget about that. I'm so sorry. And I apologize for my voice. The cedar up here always has a rough, I have a rough go with it. This is the thing that we started doing last year to sort of pre-approve the, the things we pay out of records management, including a good chunk of the salaries from my office, the time management for that office, software that we use for that office, et cetera, et cetera. It's all written in the plan. This way, we are not coming before you every time we need to buy a folder. So it's, anything new that we would do would have to come before Commissioners Court, but this kind of lets us carry on with the status quo.
Okay. Catherine, Journey? Nothing there that we have to worry about?
Yeah, you are.
Okay. What say the court?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from David, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Lee, but don't go away yet.
Okay.
Number five, from Ms. Chambers, consider and approve the renewal of the County Clerk Records Archive Fee, Restoration Plan for the permanent records for the budget. Restoration Plan for the per- permanent records for the budget fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Lee?
Yes, sir, this is the, uh, we actually renewed it, um, I guess about a year ago. So what we've done is we've added a few more volumes onto the program, including the sheriff's, uh, records. We're going to address the list pendants, um, you know, a few more, uh, smaller volumes that, uh, we kind of were holding back until we got closer to the end. So I think at this point, almost every set that we have is earmarked to start going in for restoration. And of course, we have to complete the deed records, but it's moving along quite nicely. So this is a standard renewal of our archive program, uh, now that we've, oh, and, and approval of the continuation of the ten-dollar fee.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you very much.
All right, move on to number six, from Mr. Brown over the Taxation Collector's Office. Uh, consider and approve imposition of optional fees for the calendar year twenty twenty-five for Texas Department of Motor Vehicles. Brother Rick?
Yes, sir, um, just like every year, we come up and it's a renewal of the fees or consider adding optional fees. And basically, what this does, there's a child safety fee that you could add, just adds another so many dollars to the registration fee. My recommendation is, which has been for the last thirteen years, is to continue with the ten-dollar fee that goes to Roden Bridge, but do not impose the child safety fee, because then you have, there's a challenge of trying to figure out what school it goes to, because these are funds that have to be distributed to the school, and then you have to figure the pro-rata share. And, and again, it gets down to a lot of administrative work over a small amount of funds. So, um, it's kind of been my recommendation in the past, and continue is just stay with the ten-dollar fee, which generates the funds for Roden Bridge, and to continue with that in the future.
That's big enough here, yeah.
Make a motion to approve your recommendation.
Motion from Greg to approve.
Second.
Second from Bruce, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Rick. Uh, number seven, from, uh, Constable Precinct Six, Zach Harkness. Consider and approve a deposit in the amount of one thousand two hundred and seven dollars and five cents to Cat's Glass, Cleveland, for a bulletproof glass installation at the front desk of Precinct Six Constable's Office. Total cost of the project is twenty-four hundred and fourteen dollars eleven cents on P O number one seven seven six six. Dwayne, any problem with that? No?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, from, uh, Constable Precinct Five, David Hunter. Consider and approve the interlocal agreement between Liberty County Constable Precinct Five and Target Independent School District for four school resource officers. And Catherine, do we have any hiccups on that this year? None, okay.
This school board has already approved.
Right. Got a motion from David, the second, second from Greg. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number nine, uh, we consider approving the court taking action on the appropriation of four point seven million from the ARPA funds. We did this last court, and it snuck back up on us again. So I would ask that we take no action and take appropriate action to show as such.
Make a motion, take no action.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Oh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay, that motion carries, okay. Number ten, the Economic Development Transportation from Mr. Douglas, and probably Mr. Kimbrough, if he's here with us. Consider and approve renewal of tax abatement guidelines for Liberty County.
Judge, this is something we have to do every two years.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's state law. We've been looking at it, the current form that we're using, uh, was developed by Chuck Kimbrough two years ago. And I think that, uh, having got some comments made here this morning, uh, she's having this document looked at one final time.
Yeah.
And I think you want to bring it back after Chuck has had a look at it.
Uh, yes, that, that is correct. Uh, I've spoken with Chuck, with our staff, who will be here later in the meeting. Uh, we just provide an opportunity to go over and make sure, uh, everything, um, is good. We don't need to make any additions before we recommend these to the court for approval.
Great, so your recommendation is a table?
Yes, it's a table.
Make a motion to table.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg, to table, and DeeDee will bring this up on the next go-round. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise, nay, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eleven, from, uh, Constable Precinct Two, Les Halsey. Consider and approve the interlocal agreement between Liberty County, Constable Precinct Two, and Haldayset Independent School District for a school resource officer.
Does it approve this?
Second. Motion from Greg, second from Bruce, to approve, further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nay, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number twelve, from Sheriff and from Chief Knox. Consider and approve contract addendum with NCIC. Provide the Liberty County Jail with correctional telephone services, video visitation services, messaging, tablets, and related communications for the incarcerated rates, fees, and revenue share. Uh, those are attached in the packet. Sure that y'all have the opportunity to look this over. Sheriff, anything you want to add to it? If you do, well, come on up. Chief, come on up.
Earn the salary.
Because I got to get you on the, I had to get you on the microphone, buddy.
Yes, sir. The big change is the tablets, we're going to give them a try in the jail. They're also offering a ten thousand dollar technology grant, which we hope to use on the new, uh, app for the sheriff's office that we're going to present next, uh, Commissioners Court, so.
It does, Catherine, you had the opportunity to look over this, or you, Matthew, or?
I have not yet, but I'm sure.
Mr. Poston reviewed it.
Oh, we did?
Yes, I see.
Okay.
All right.
Does it approve?
Okay, motion from Greg, second from David to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. This company does a pretty good job, Sheriff, they, they really do, yeah. Number thirteen, from Ms. Chambers, uh, over in the County Clerk's Office, discuss and approve the replacement of credit card vendor Pay Guardian Bridge Pay with Tyler Payments, including new credit card machines in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars to be paid, I love this part, to be paid from County Clerk Records Management Fund, thank you, Lee. The current credit card machines and credit card vendor will no longer support, or will be supported by Tyler Technologies at the end of the year. So we're just going to go ahead and get, step it in the right direction, is that right? You want to help us out a little bit, Lee?
Uh, yes, sir, the Tyler Technologies contract with Bridge Pay is expiring by the end of the year. Uh, they're not going to support the credit card machines we have, which is just as well, because they're failing a lot on this lately. So we're going to replace the credit card machines and switch over from Bridge Pay to Tyler Pay. Uh, it's approximately the same service fee. Um, it's just a, uh, you know, thing we have to do to use the software, unfortunately, not a lot of choice. Uh, but I think it should be a pretty smooth transition, and it's not too expensive.
Okay, Dwayne, any problem with the method of payment? Okay, what say the court?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve, further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay, that motion does carry, thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Number fourteen, you bet, number fourteen, from Ms. Soliday over in the Permits and Inspections. Consider and approve draw request number one for the Community Development Block Grant, D R Contract, number two four zero six five zero one four E one seven one, in the amount of four hundred ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and three cents. This is for Grant Works Invoice Number Zero Zero One, in the amount of ten thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars, ten cents, and L J A Engineering Incorporated Invoice Two Zero Two Four One One Eight Seven Five, in the amount of four hundred eighty-five thousand, eighty-seven dollars, ninety-five cents. The billing summary for this grant and documents for signatures are attached in the packet. And Melinda, you need to, that's pretty self-explanatory, really.
This is the first for all, I'm going to tell you.
We just need to pay these folks, that's basically it. Dwayne, any concerns? Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay, that motion does carry, number fifteen, from Permits and Inspections, Ms. Soliday, and from David Whitmire over in Precinct Three. David, this is up your neck of the woods. Consider and approve Benado Lakes Section One Preliminary Platte. It's eighty-six lots, uh, it's Precinct Three off of County Road Three Seven Three. Development has gone through a redesign and now has a gravity system of detention, which we requested about six, seven, eight months ago.
Yes, because they have the original.
Right. L J Engineering, uh, letter of approval is attached in the packet, that'll be helpful. Uh, you have any concerns, David, or Melinda, you have any descriptions you need to add to it? Where is it close to, David?
Harvest Acres.
Harvest Acres, where is that exactly?
Close to Splendor.
Close to Splendor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, backside of Maywood.
That's like telling me it's next to the Zarski's house, okay? Okay, it's, uh, up off of fifty-nine, but close to Splendor.
Yes, sir.
Got you, all right. What say the court?
Does it approve?
Motion from Greg.
Second.
Second from Bruce, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay, that motion does carry, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Melinda. Also, this next one, uh, is also in Commissioner Whitmire's precinct, number sixteen. Consider and approve Gemini Subdivision Section One Construction, Final Drainage and Final Platte, Precinct Three off of County Road Three Seventy, eight three point five five acres, one hundred and sixty-one lots. And L J A has also sent a letter of approval that is attached in your packets. Same neck of the woods, David?
Absolutely, yes.
Right next door.
Right up the road.
There it is, okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from David to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number seventeen, this is over, this is in Bruce Karbowski's precinct. Consider and approve Sterling Traditions Concept Plan for development off of Highway One Forty-six North of the River Ranch subdivision. This is a four hundred and seventy-six acre subdivision in Precinct One. Y'all have any comments or concerns? We've had?
Well, I know my name's on here, but I have not been contacted, nor have I seen anything about this.
Okay. Maybe we need to get you?
Yeah, this is the, just the approval of the concept plan itself. I did put a note on there from our, uh, development regulations, the approval of concept or of the master plan does not constitute approval of subsequent plans with the plan batteries. If you would like me to bring it back on the next agenda, I can do so.
No, I see no big problem, I'd just like to be, make a motion to approve. Second.
You're not being difficult. Got a motion from Bruce, second from David, but you will see the plan here shortly, won't you?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay, that motion does carry, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, Sterling guys, y'all need to get with Bruce, first chance you get, okay, all right. Uh, next one's for me, discuss and take potential action on the placement of customer parking-only signs on the west side of Liberty County Courthouse. Lord have mercy, y'all. That's not employee parking over there, okay? And I hate to tell you all this, but we, we go through this about every couple of years. You know, we are service providers here, and if our customers can't get here, then I hear about it. I get a phone call and say, I've had to park at the Catholic church to get to the courthouse when they shouldn't. So we've tried it in the past, like, just send out an email, everybody say, hey, quit parking there, okay? You know, I know you're an employee of the county, and it's, it's one hundred and five degrees, and, or it's raining, or there's the H-word, I'm not going to say the word, or whatever. But it's for the folks that do business here, okay?
How many spots are we going to designate right along the front of this building? Or have you looked?
We already have our designation for handicap parking, probably need to renew the paint on those if we get a chance. And then all the other spots, I would say, place signs on that west side.
West side.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number nineteen, from Ms. McCarty and Mr. Poston over in the County Attorney's Office. Consider and approve brokerage service contract between Liberty County and Van de Venter Realtors to represent Liberty County in the purchase of thirty-six acres located at to-be-determined State Highway One Forty-six North, pretty much no, but yet the boundaries need to be determined, which would be surveyed out of a hundred and four point seven two two five five acre tract of land located at the B W Harden Survey Abstract Number Forty-seven, tract number seventeen, Liberty County, Texas. And this is, Sheriff contiguous to your current location? Yeah, yeah. And this is to approve the brokerage service contract only, Catherine?
Yes, this is just the contract to allow Van de Venter Realtors to represent.
Okay.
Does it approve? Second.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce, further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty, from Ms. McCarty and Mr. Poston. Uh, consider and approve commercial unimproved property contract for the purchase of thirty-six acres located at to-be-determined State Highway One Forty-six North to be surveyed out of a one hundred and four point seven two two five five acre tract of land located in the B W Harden Survey Abstract Number Forty-seven, tract number seventeen, Liberty County, Texas, for the purpose of future Liberty County Jail. That's pretty self-explanatory, Catherine, we have any concerns on that?
No, sir, I believe the contract, uh, it's in the contract, um, again, this is just the, um, first step to acquiring that property.
Probably the biggest concern will be Dwayne and Kim.
Does it approve? Second.
Okay, you got a motion from Greg, second from Bruce, further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty-one, from Commissioner Wilson over in Precinct Four. Consider and approve the donation of a point three three zero six acre tract located at Trinity Steel Forest, Block Two, Lot Fifty-Six. Acres are point three three zero six in Dayton, Liberty County, Texas, uh, to Liberty County by Mike Brewer. Catherine, you have any? Uh, to Liberty County by Mike Brewer. Catherine, you have any thing to add to this?
I've spoken to Commissioner Wilson and Mr. Brewer. Uh, Mr. Wilson did indicate he does want this property in his precinct. Um, it's a fairly small tract. It's point three, three, zero, six acres. Um, I've got, I think I included, um, the assessed value in your packet. It's very nominal. Um, I believe it was two hundred and sixty dollars. Um, it's undeveloped. But Commissioner Wilson did indicate he would like to have this property.
Where's it located near? Does that?
That's a great question, gentlemen. I'm not as familiar with this area, but I believe that it was purchased, um, as part of a hopeful development that never.
Never happened, yeah. All right.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty-two from Mr. Poston over at County Attorney's Office. Consider and approve issuance of letter of support for application by Bennett Motors for a foreign trade zone. Uh, Catherine, you have anything you want to enlighten us with on this one?
Uh, this is based on, um, I believe a meeting the court had to talk about, um, foreign trade zone and Bennett Motors coming to Liberty County to be a part of that. This just allows my office permission to write a letter on behalf of the court in support of this project.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's call for a vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty-three from Mr. Poston, Ms. McCarty. Consider and approve replacement warranty deed for lots fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five of Horseshoe Lakes Estates, section twelve, a subdivision in Liberty County, Texas, originally recorded as a quitclaim deed on January third, twenty seventeen, in Liberty County Real Property Records, instrument number two, zero, one, seven, zero, zero, one, five, nine, four, as sold by way of a tax sale to grantee Justin Metlin. Catherine?
This item is purely clerical in nature. Uh, this property was sold by Liberty County via tax sale to Mr. Metlin. Um, I believe someone else is now trying to purchase the property from Mr. Metlin, but they're trying to clear title, and there is an issue with the original deed, so this is, this is purely just correcting that original. I believe it was quitclaim deed and it needs to be, um, a warranty deed, so it's just simply correction.
Make a motion to approve.
Whenever you, whenever you get a tax sale, is there a certain amount of time before they clear that date? Somebody, somebody has a right to come back in and buy it?
There is, I believe.
Are we out of that period?
It's two years, yeah.
And yes, we should be out of that period, because this, the original sale of twenty seventeen.
Catherine, I have difficulty hearing you. Can you turn on a mic?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Motion from, uh, Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty-four from Mr. C. I don't see Mr. C. Okay. Sir? Okay, Stephanie, you're, yep, there you are. Okay. Considering approve the purchase of a trailer, a John Deere gator, and irrigation equipment from Shoppa's John Deere and Company, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars, thirty-three cents through a buy board contract number seven, oh, six, dash, two, three, for precinct three. You gonna get you a gator there, David?
You gonna use it for spraying, get you some stat, little pilot wagon stuff down south.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Bruce. Second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty-five from Mr. C. Art Stephanie, good morning. Consider approve the purchase of a used twenty-twenty police package Chevrolet Tahoe from Chief's Pursuit Surplus. Well, I've never heard of this place, but it sounds pretty good, in the amount of thirty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, twenty-nine cents and trade-in of asset number twenty-three, oh, two, which is a twenty-seventeen Ford Explorer for five thousand dollars for a total purchase price of twenty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, twenty-nine cents for adult probation.
Before you make a motion, can we, um, add in the motion, Lee, to consider the asset twenty-three, oh, two as surplus? And then allow for the trade-in?
Catherine, that's gonna be a.
It's a technical, we have to declare a surplus first. We just don't have notice of it.
Yeah.
Agenda item, so I would ask that we table it and bring it back up. I'm sorry, Stephanie. Yeah, it's okay.
Okay.
Poor Perez. He can't be upset.
Let's say the court.
Make a motion to table.
Thank you. Motion from Bruce.
Um, they've been trying to get this deal done. A couple of weeks, they're waiting for a purchase order from us, and then he was gonna go pick up the vehicle and then wait on a check for it. Um, so it might put him in a position to lose the vehicle.
Should we approve the purchase of vehicle and then, uh, come back and?
Less the trade-in? Less the trade-in?
Yeah, less the trade-in, and then, and then come back in and.
Commissioners Court is authorizing the sale of this vehicle. Do we need to claim it as salvage? Since it's not salvage, we're actually selling.
No, we're just basically saying we don't need it anymore, and as a matter of fact, it probably costs us more to put it in auction and try to sell it than it would.
Right.
Would save.
So would we have to declare a salvage or surplus?
Surplus.
Surplus. It would be surplus. Uh, could we just go ahead with the way it's written on the agenda? Where it would be like a trade-in type situation?
Yeah.
It, it, it seems like, um, that would, that would work. It, you know, you're, when you do clear something.
That way we can just.
Uh, yeah, if you're just trading it in for the value of the new vehicle, I think that's sufficient. I don't think that you have to have a separate process where you, um, would approve it as surplus property.
I'll change my motion.
It, it looks like it's part of a, a surplus, you know, inventory, and it's being traded in. Uh, generally when we salvage, it's to put it up for auction or do other things with it. I, I don't see a problem with this fitting into the, uh, the language as written. It, it shouldn't. I don't, I don't see where it's a problem. Do you, Catherine?
No, I don't.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. We're not gonna table, but we're gonna approve, Bruce.
Yes.
Thank you. That's a motion from Bruce, second from David. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Don't sit down yet. Stephanie, you got one more to go here. Uh, number twenty-six, considering approve the transfer of asset number forty-six, ninety, a twenty-twenty-one Chevrolet Silverado from precinct three to the sheriff's office. Precinct three, you?
Yeah, but I give the information to Wayne, he's the wrong truck.
The the language read, it's asset twenty, twenty, sixty. And it's a two thousand seventeen, twenty-two, sixty, two thousand seventeen model. Catherine?
Yeah.
With the VIN that you gave me? You match it with the VIN that he gave you?
No, it's a totally different truck.
Oh, you're changing the truck?
Correct.
Oh.
Again, I think this is probably one of these dicey situations where we didn't get notice of the correct tran, the correct vehicle for transfer.
Yep.
Um, so I would, I would suggest that the court table this and bring it back up.
I would request.
There is no backup attached. Just, you know, there was no backup to this item.
Oh.
Putting it on court to.
No documents.
Yeah, still, just out of one hundred percent transparency.
Yeah, we don't want to come get your brand-new truck from you and be driving it off, okay? Let's say the court.
Make a motion to table.
Thank you. Motion from Bruce, second from David. Otherwise, give me your keys there, brother. It's all right. Any further discussion? Call for vote on favor, say aye. Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty-seven. I'm over in the purchasing department. Stephanie, it's, uh, considering approve the purchase of a twenty-twenty-four Chevrolet Silverado from Caldwell Country Chevrolet in the amount of forty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars through the buy board contract number seven, two, four, dash, two, three for precinct three. So you gonna get one back?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I got you.
Second.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, this next one, let's see, uh, also from Mr. C. Consider and approve, it's number twenty-eight. Consider approve soliciting bids for culverts. What you got?
We have a contract that expires in September. Uh, they have additional renewals on them that have been mutual. Um, the vendor and the county, and the vendor wished to go back out to this. We have two, two vendors for these culverts, so we'll be going back out today.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Next, uh, we have some executive session items. Three. It's a whole lot of reading. But I guess I'll get started. Number twenty-nine. From Mr. Poston, Ms. McCarty, and from Chuck Kimbrough, our, uh, counsel with Bickerstaff. Discussion of potential action. Shall occur between, uh, shall occur pursuant to chapter three eighty-one of the Texas Local Government Code. Another authority regarding the following matters. A, approval and execution of proposed First Amendment to Economic Development Program Agreement by and between Liberty County, Liberty County Solar Project LLC, which is a company regarding the company's solar power electricity generating facility project to be constructed, operated, and maintained by the company on certain contiguous real property located in Liberty County, Texas, a part of the JA Williams League or Survey Abstract number one, one, nine. Therein, in said project site containing approximately one thousand, one hundred and five and point eight, four, six acres, more or less. And with said agreement requiring compliance with the county's accompanying economic development program and the company's proposed project components, including among other things, the attainment of, one, an initial facility improvement value investment by the company at the project site in excess of a hundred and fifty million dollars. Two, certain minimum job creation requirements. Three, preliminary reimbursement to be paid to the county regarding its incurred cost related to the project and transaction. Four, the extension of a certain real estate option agreement period in favor of the county regarding certain land proposed to be donated by the company to the county for public purposes. And five, other components to be properly accomplished by the company for its project to stimulate business and commercial activity in Liberty County, Texas. And B, all related matters. This is a solar project that's on fourteen, oh, nine, uh, close to the Seawall Canal, and well in between Big Ditch and Seawall Canal. Number thirty, which will also be considered an executive session. Um, discussion of potential action shall occur pursuant to chapter three eighty-one of the Texas Local Government Code, chapter three, twelve of the Texas Tax Code, and other authority regarding the following matters. A, the approval, if any, of continued negotiation between the parties regarding a proposed tax abatement and economic development agreement by and between Liberty County and Industrial Kilo Project LLC, which is a company. Regarding the company's proposed solar power electricity generating facility project to be constructed, operated, and maintained by the company on certain contiguous real property located Liberty County, Texas. Said project site being located in the extreme southwest corner of Liberty County, Texas, on or adjacent to the boundary of said county with Harris County on the far west and Chambers County on the south. Said site being located on or near Liberty County Road forty-six and with said project site containing approximately two thousand, four hundred and seventeen point nine, four acres, more or less, and the all related matters. This is a separate project, consider. This will be over, uh, beyond, um, Highway ninety-nine. Okay, on the far, I'm shooting a free throw, it's gonna be on the far side of ninety-nine. And number nine. This will also be an executive closed session. Executive closed session meeting will occur regarding the following matters. Uh, A, pursuant to and in compliance with sections five, five, one point zero, seven, one, two, and five, five, one point one, two, nine, the Texas Government Code, which is consultation with attorney. For the Commissioners Court to consult and seek advice from its attorneys regarding issues related to active or proposed tax abatement and our economic development agreement matters. B, pursuant to and in compliance with section five, five, one point zero, eight, seven of the Texas Government Code, which is economic development negotiations. For the Commissioners Court to, one, discuss or deliberate regarding commercial or financial information the Commissioners Court has received from a business prospect or prospects that the Commissioners Court is considering to have locate, stay, or expand in Liberty County, Texas, and with which the Commissioners Court is conducting economic development negotiations. And or, two, deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to or from said business prospects or prospect for proposed projects or project to be located in Liberty County, Texas. And C, pursuant to and in compliance with section five, five, one point zero, seven, two, five of the Texas Government Code, which is deliberation regarding contracts being negotiated. For the Commissioners Court to deliberate business and financial issues relating to a contract or contracts being negotiated with a third-person party. Those are the three items that will be in executive session, correct, Catherine?
Uh, yes, you've got, uh, two regarding economic development, development in Liberty County, and a third in regards to, uh, potential SRO contract with the urban developers.
Okay. Did I miss anything? Okay, so need to move into executive session, need a motion and a second.
Make a motion, go into executive session.
Say.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote on favor, say aye. It is now ten, oh, seven, and we are in exec. Okay, it's now eleven, fifteen. Okay.
Do we need a motion to go out of executive session?
No.
No, no, we're good. Okay, on the matter of. Okay, on the matter of the first item.
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a certain warning that we need to put on that?
Yeah, I guess we-
Motion to approve, uh, the amendment to, uh, Liberty County Solar Project three eighty-one amendment to be executed in triplicate.
Make a motion just like you said?
Love it.
Second.
Motion from Greg.
I didn't, I didn't get all of that. Uh, what I had based on what Chuck was saying was motion to approve the execution of the proposed First Amendment to the Economic Development Program Agreement by and between Liberty County and Liberty County Solar Project LLC, including an upfront payment of twenty-three thousand to verify the suitability of the land being donated. Suitability study must be completed before the end of twenty twenty-four. Was there something else we need to put on there?
To be executed in triplicate.
Was that twenty twenty-four or with, with the extension?
The extension is twenty twenty-five.
April of twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-five.
I was, I thought he said they had to have it done by the end of the year.
Yeah.
No. It's April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Now we also have to have an extension on the agreement. That would be a motion.
That's what this is.
That's it, okay.
Yeah, and you want, you want it to say, uh, amendment, um-
It's, it's the first amendment to the original three eighty-one document that was executed.
In triplicate.
In December of twenty-
The original drop dead date was December thirty-first of this year.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it. I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Greg made the motion and Bruce made the second.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote on favor say aye. Likewise nay, as that motion carries. Matter of, uh, any continued negotiation between, uh, the parties with industrial kilo.
I move that we discontinue negotiations at this point.
Okay, got a motion from Greg, second from David, to cease and respectfully discontinue negotiations with industrial kilo pursuant to their economic development agreement.
Application, application.
Application. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote on favor say aye. Likewise nay, as that motion carries.
Thank you, Lee.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg, get time and all in favor say aye. We're done.
See y'all later.